Good evening. It is Monday, February 13th, 2023, and the time is 6:00 PM. This regular meeting with the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees is called to order. A quorum is present, a notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required by law. At this time, the Board of Trustees will move into a closed meeting under the authority of Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, under personnel. No formal action will be taken in closed meeting, and we will return here shortly. The Board will now reconvene from executive session. The time is 6:24 PM. We'd like to welcome everyone here to our regular Board meeting tonight. We're glad you're here. With us tonight, we have Pastor Keith Lowe, who is with Vertical Life Church, that will offer our invocation, and then we have a group of students from Shaw Elementary School that will lead us in our pledges of allegiance. So we invite you at this time to stand for the invocation and the pledges of allegiance.
First, thank you tonight, first of all, for this opportunity to represent you before these leaders and educators and before those who serve and live in this community of schools, and also before those whose children attend and are part of the Mesquite ISD enrollment family. Secondly, I just want to say thank you for an executive leadership team that believes in the necessity of prayer, as they begin their business agendas asking for your help and guidance to make appropriate and accurate decisions concerning the welfare of this school district and its student body. Mother Teresa said that prayer is putting oneself in the hands of God. So Father, today I put these school board leaders into your precious hands. Will you shelter and protect them, and will you place them under the wings and the shadow of your presence? I know at times there will be difficult and demanding decisions that will need to be addressed and confronted, but the things that are impossible with man are more than possible with you. So I pray, Heavenly Father, that you would lead and guide these men and women of the Mesquite ISD School Board, and that you would fill them with your wisdom and knowledge as they seek to follow your will and hear your heart for the matters at hand. Lord, you said, "A man's heart plans his way, but the Lord directs his steps." So Lord, whatever agenda is planned and whatever matters or discuss, would you hear their hearts and bring clarity and direction in the steps that they need to be taken so that peace will be brought to all those involved, and so that ultimately glory will be brought to your name? Thank you, Lord, for always hearing our prayers. In Jesus' name, amen.
Hi, my name is T.J., and I am in kindergarten now, and I go to Shaw.
Hi, my name is Lily, and I'm in second grade, and I go to Ruby Shaw Elementary.
Hi, my name is Tatiana. I am in second grade, and I go to Ruby Shaw Elementary.
My name is Azai, and I go to Ruby Shaw Elementary, and I'm in second grade.
Hi, my name is June King, and I'm nine years old, and I go to Shaw Elementary, and I'm in first grade.
Hi, my name is Diego. I'm in second grade.
Hi, I'm Dayton Cordeman. I'm in second grade, and I'm eight years old.
I'm Connor Douglas, and I go to Ruby Shaw, and I'm in second grade.
Thank all of you so much. You did an outstanding job. We appreciate you being here tonight. Next up on our agenda is our Board and PTA moment. Is there anyone here from PTA? Come forward, please. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. So few updates on PTA. We still are accepting members, so if you haven't already, go onto joinpta.org and sign up to be a member of your local PTA or all of our schools, whichever one you choose. We have a lot going on coming up. Advocacy is planning Rally Day. We have about 300 students that are planning to attend. That's the last numbers I got, so hopefully we still have those numbers and more. That will be February 27th. We have Founder's Day banquet coming up, which is...
March 3rd.
...at Mesquite High School. Doors open at 5:30.
5:00.
Oh, 5:00, and it starts at 6:00. I'm getting there. I'm horrible with numbers today. Other than that, I don't have any other... Oh, I do. We are starting our nomination process for next year's Board for our Council of PTAs. If anyone is interested in joining our Board, we are looking for people to come on board so we can teach them about PTA and help us grow as a PTA in our district and be strong for our local units. And we almost have every single school in our district in good standing with Texas PTA. I'm super proud of that. One of our schools, it had been 15 years since they had been in good standing, and we finally got them in good standing. So it's pretty exciting, being able to be a part of that and accomplish such amazing things. Madonna is going to be passing out your Founder's Day invitations for banquet, and that is all I have. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Thank you so much. And then today in our public work session, we had a very special guest, and Mr. Carbo is going to give us some information regarding that.
Yes, we had indeed a special guest. Congressman Lanskoden came and met with us today. It was very interesting, and we're very appreciative that he would come to our building and meet with us here. We spoke about several topics, among them, the teacher retention and recruitment issues that we are having in the state and actually around the nation, recruiting teachers and keeping them, and some of the issues that he's going to look into and help us with. Everybody's paying attention to this because of the churnout in teachers, and I think one of the biggest problems is that we don't have a lot of kids graduating from college that go into pedagogy, you know, to become teachers. We also talked about IDEA, which is very important to us. Those are federal mandates that were put amongst the schools in the United States. The federal government promised to fund about 40% of that. Right now, they're funding 17%. So that 23% that's missing, we have to put that in there, but that is something that we have been working all these years trying to get. It's not an easy topic, especially for Congress. You have to understand that there are so many things they have to look at. Education is just one of those branches. So we understand that part. We talked about the Permanent School Fund, which I think is very important to us. One of the reasons is because that Permanent School Fund is really, it's like an insurance policy administered by TEA. And what that does is those funds, when they're used for building infrastructure and all that, those come in a bond that are rated AAA. As you know, the schools are rated AA+ or so. We have ratings of AA. When we get the use of those funds, now our bonds are AAA. So that means that we get a better price, and it's less cost to the citizens of Mesquite. So I think that's a very important point. We're really trying to get help with that, and I know the congressman is going to look into it. He looked at, he talked to us about what we had to share with him, and he was very receptive, so I really appreciate that. And we'll see. We'll keep working on it. So that's what I have.
Anybody have anything to add? If not, the next item on the agenda is under Student and Staff Guest. Ms. Jobe?
All right. We're going to begin our recognition by recognizing one of our Apple Corps teachers this month. We have Felix Lugo here from AC New Middle School, and he is a 7th grade social studies teacher. We have a brief video to introduce him to you.
As a staff, we are extremely proud to be able to add Mr. Lugo's name to the growing list of amazing educators as an MISD Apple Corps recipient. Mr. Lugo has this ability to be able to constantly grow, constantly question whether or not practices are appropriate or whether or not they are best, and he never stops asking those questions. And because of this, he has a tendency to raise the level of bar to all of those around him, and we're extremely proud of him, and congratulations, Mr. Lugo. It is so well deserved.
I think teaching is one of the most important professions in our society. As teachers, we have the ability to shape our students' lives and learning. As a middle school teacher, I try to instill habits and skills that will empower them beyond middle school, inside and outside the classroom. Our students want to be successful. I want success for our students, and I try to contribute to that consistently.
There's two pieces. There's not a piece, three pieces. I'm on a resolution. A proclamation. It says, "Whereas the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees seeks to honor outstanding classroom teachers who demonstrate leadership, innovation, and dedication to the students of Mesquite ISD, and whereas the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps consists of exceptional teachers nominated by their peers to receive the school district's highest recognition, therefore be resolved that the Board officially welcomes Felix Lugo into the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps 13th day of February 2023." Thank you so much.
Well, good evening, everyone. I would like to start by saying, being here is quite an honor, and I would like to share that honor by thanking the people who have helped me get here today. First, I want to thank Dr. Carpenter, who hired me seven years ago and gave me the opportunity to work in one of the most rewarding and important professions there are. I also want to thank my AC New family, whose positivity at school is tremendous, and it makes every day a great day. Some of them are here. I know I seen Ms. Jones over here. Also, thank you, AC New Principals, Mrs. Lewis, who can brighten any day, every day. Ms. Mason, thank you for helping me grow as a teacher and as a leader. Ms. Jackson, who has had a lasting impact on me. Four years ago, on your first staff development as principal of AC New Middle School, you asked us, your staff, are your teachers, are your students at an advantage because you are their teacher? Thank you for this. This has driven me ever since, because I do want to be an advantage for my students. I also want to thank my two daughters, Emma and Helen, who many times, most of the time willingly, come to my students' events.[885.62][885.62](笑声) Thank you, girls. Most importantly, I want to thank my wife, Myra, a great teacher herself. Thank you for your unwavering support since my first day as a teacher. Thank you for your encouragement, ideas, and always being available when I need help. I would not be here without you. Finally, thank you, Mesquite ISD Board. This is a great recognition, and I sincerely appreciate it.
He is the only recipient tonight. Our other Apple Corps teacher could not make it tonight, so we will recognize her next one.
Okay, well, Mr. Lugo, if you'd like to have your family and your friends and colleagues to stand so they can be recognized.[938.43][938.43](掌声) Congratulations. We appreciate all the great things you do in our classroom each and every day for our students. We appreciate you very much.
Each month, we also recognize one of our outstanding paraprofessional employees, and tonight is no exception. So I'd like to invite Angie Campanello forward. She is the Assistant Principal at Ty Singer Elementary School, and she's going to introduce the star parat to us.
We are super excited to be able to bring Angel Lopez before the Board. She's been at Ty Singer for about two years, and in those two years, she has literally covered every single classroom. She has done arrival, dismissal, music, art, PE, all of it. And at Ty Singer, I don't think that we could get through a day without her. One of the great things that she has done is learn our LLI intervention materials, and she pulls struggling readers every day to help them succeed. So thank you so much for recognizing her.
All right, now to recognize some students this evening. First, we have Spelling Bee winners, and from Frazier Middle School, this is Delilah Roman. She earned second place in the MISD Spelling Bee and advanced to the Dallas County Spelling Bee, so and her sponsor is Danny Beppel.[1055.25][1055.25](掌声) And our first-place Spelling Bee winner from Ogzigur Elementary School, Fatia Omoyemi Shadari. She again won first place, and she advanced to the Dallas County Spelling Bee. Her sponsor this evening is Robin Cathcart.[1084.75][1084.75](掌声) All right. From Porter Elementary, this is Jose Angel Zuniga, UIL grades 2 and 3, the chess puzzle district champion, and his sponsor is Veronica Armandares.[1114.58][1114.58](掌声) All right. From Hanby Elementary, this is Max Sierra, UIL grades 4 and 5, the chess puzzle district champion. Sponsor Jennifer Guerrero. Forgive me, Jennifer could not be here. This is Anna Ortiz. From Frazier Middle School, Isaac Vazquez is a UIL grades 6 through 8 chess puzzle champion and number sense champion, and Danny Beppel is here with him as well.[1169.43][1169.43](掌声) And this is Juan Aguilar, Frazier Middle School, UIL grades 6 through 8 calculator applications champion, and his sponsor this evening is David Peacock.[1196.83][1196.83](掌声) All right. From Smith Elementary, this is Nicole Nkemkaudu, UIL grades 3 through 4, reading and writing district champion, and her sponsor is Stacy Bennett.[1225.75][1225.75](掌声) Next is Analia Godinez, Range Elementary's UIL grades 5 and 6, reading, writing district From McDonald Middle School, this is Camila Ramirez, UIL grades 7 through 8, reading, writing district champion, and her sponsor is Dan Alguirin.[1280.58][1280.58](掌声) From AC New Middle School, this is Matthew Castilla, UIL grades 4 through 6, number sense district champion. And now for our final arts recognition. From Potteet High School, Mariana Peterson, TDEA, All-State Dance, and sponsor is Nicole From Potteet High School, this is Isaiah Robinson, TMEA, All-State Choir, sponsor From Potteet High School, this is Gracie Royal, TMEA, All-State Band, and her sponsor From North Mesquite High School, this is Madison Finley, TDEA, All-State Dance. From North Mesquite High School, Jeremiah Grimaldo, TMEA, All-State Choir, and his From West Mesquite High School, this is Jocelyn Quinones, TDEA, All-State Dance. Sponsor is Shelby Crummins.[1440.83][1440.83](掌声) From West Mesquite High School, Madison Gilbert, TMEA, All-State Band. Sponsor is Jennifer Border and Dan Duddy.[1458.00][1458.00](掌声) From John Horn High School, this is Daisy Orozco, TDEA, All-State Dance. Also from John Horn High School, this is Giovani Kovarubius, TMEA, All-State Choir, From Mesquite High School, this is Evan Punagua, TMEA, All-State Choir. All right. And representing Skeeter Theater Troop Number 526, to be featured in a recent issue of Texas Thespians Monthly as a spotlight troupe for their outstanding work in theatrical productions, this sponsors are Baxter Chaney and Joseph Burnham.[1559.00][1559.00](掌声) And now it's time to recognize our MISD community partner through replay talk. I believe we have a video to introduce this partner to you.
This month, we are excited to recognize the MISD Library Services Department as our featured community partner for their efforts in creating the MISD Library Share Card.
My main goal with this whole program is to get a library card in every child's hand. People don't know you're here. So by getting these cards issued through Mesquite ISD, through the schools, they're automatically getting told, "Hey, there's a library near you. There's a library in Bolt Springs. There's a library in Mesquite."
Mesquite ISD is in what we call a book desert, which means that we have a lot of families that live in this area that do not have a lot of books in their home that students can readily put their hands on and be able to read whenever they want.
This project has been a collaboration between Mesquite ISD, the City of Mesquite, and the City of Bolt Springs.
School librarians and public librarians do a lot of collaboration. They want to collaborate with one another, and we all have the same goal in mind, which is to get books in the hands of our students.
We are so excited to offer the Library Share Card to our students within Mesquite ISD, and we hope that all parents take advantage of this incredible opportunity for their
And that concludes our recognition this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Jobe. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Does anybody have any items that they'd like to discuss?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Carbo and a second by Mrs. Whitlock to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is under audience. We do have four members that, or four people that would like to address the Board, but it's regarding an item later on in our agenda under administration regarding our four-day instructional calendar. And if you'd like to address us now, it's perfectly fine, but I would request that if you would be willing to wait just a few minutes, that the presentation that is made may provide a lot of information that you don't currently have. So would that be okay with everybody that signed up? If you have any other items that you would like to address that's on our agenda that's not the four-day instruction calendar, we'll hear from you now if there are any people. Okay. Next item on the agenda is reports of the superintendent and personnel. Dr. Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. President. We bring in four recommendations. The first one is going to be done by Dr. Hammett, so if she can please approach.
Good evening. It is my complete honor to introduce you tonight to our district avid coordinator, Ms. Alicia Chapman, if you will please come forward.[1781.43][1781.43](掌声) So Alicia Chapman has been in education for 17 years. She spent 11 years teaching middle school avid courses in the Garland and Rockwall School districts. In 2017, she came to North Mesquite High School, where she's been teaching... In 2017, she came to North Mesquite High School, where she's been teaching avid courses and has served as the district liaison for avid for the past six years. Alicia is a 2002 graduate of Potteet High School and received her Bachelor of Science from John Brown University, where she played soccer, and then her Master's of Education from Texas A&amp;M University Commerce. She is also a very proud mother of a fifth-grade student at Austin Elementary. So we welcome Alicia Chapman as our avid district coordinator.
Well, hold on. You know, thank you for introducing her. We still have to vote, Jennifer.
We'll entertain.
Yeah.
We will entertain a motion for this position.
Mr. President, we have...
Absolutely. All right, we hold on. This is actually good. All right, we'll bring to our next candidate. A request has been made to do the entire recommendation from administration, and then the board will entertain a vote as all. So either all of you get hired, or none of you get hired. But that's the way that it goes, so. We're a family, so we're going to take the whole family. Okay. So our next recommendation from administration is for principal of Tosh Elementary. And I'm going to read the bio. And so will Ms. Molly Laird, please approach the lectern. Molly Laird is our recommendation for Tosh Elementary principal. She has completed her ninth year in the field of education. She started her career as a fifth-grade teacher at Thompson Elementary. She later transitioned to Sunnyvale ISD, working as a middle school social studies teacher and coach, before returning back to Mesquite as an instructional coach at Terry Middle School. In 2019, Ms. Laird began serving as an administrator and has served at Henry, Terry, and currently has the pleasure of serving Agnew Middle School. She earned her bachelor's degree from Texas Women's University and a master's of educational leadership from University of North Texas. Goldmine Green. All right, Molly Laird.
I wanted to start off by thanking the board. Your guidance to this district is supportive and it's constant. I want to thank you, Dr. Rivera, the cabinet, and the EDLDs. I've had the honor and privilege of learning and growing under your leadership. Thank you to the mentors I've had. Over my four and a half years in administration, I have been blessed to have some amazing principals. Some of them are here tonight. I want to thank Lisa Millsaps, Kelly Pruitt, TJ Reed, and Brett Peterson. They truly have poured into me, and they've helped mold me into the leader that I am today. Your guidance has been unmatched, and I'm excited to continue learning from y'all. Thank you to the staff at Henry Elementary, Terry Middle School, and most recently, Agnew Middle School. My time as an assistant principal has been some of the best years of my career. I will always be thankful for the relationships that have been formed and the experiences that have been provided to me from these campuses. To my amazing fiance, my family, and my friends, hi, there in the back. There's not enough thank yous in the world to cover the love and support y'all give me daily. You've been nothing but supportive as I chase my dreams. And to Tosh Elementary, I am so blessed and honored to have the opportunity to lead y'all next year. I promise to always base my decisions on what's best for kids. It's a privilege to be in this role, and I cannot wait to continue the great work that y'all have already begun. Thank you.
Our next recommendation is for Terry Middle School. Would Irina Mason, please approach the lectern? Irina has completed 17 years in the field of education. She started her career as an English teacher in Aldine ISD. She later transitioned to Mesquite ISD, working as an English teacher at Terry Middle School and for our here at Potteet as well, right? Or only at Potteet. In 2018, Irina began serving as an administrator at A.C. New Middle School. She earned a Bachelor of Arts from Prairie View University and a Master's of Education from Grand Canyon University. Ladies and gentlemen, Irina Mason.
Thank you. Thank you, Board, thank you, Dr. Rivera, thank you, Cabinet. So yes, Taylor Morris. I do want to tell Taylor, thank you, because he hired me in 2016 when I relocated from Houston. But not only did he hire me, he also pushed me to step into leadership and begin my leadership journey, so thank you, Taylor. The cabinet, thank y'all very much for all of your support as well. I also want to thank, as I moved from Westside Best Side to Jags for Life, Dr. Goss, thank you for all your constant support and seeing my potential. And then Mrs. Sarpy, I am so excited to get to work with you as well, as we start this new journey. A few years back, and I need to tell this quick story, my pastor preached on a sermon titled "Faith That Prevails," and he challenged us to trust God and lead and live with the expectation that God is going to show up. And I've trusted him and allowed his will to be done, and I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge my prayer partners, Kavi, my small group, my church family, those who've prayed over me, and the desires of my heart. Thank you all for your authentic fellowship. I have my mom who's watching at home, I have close friends at home, I have close friends here, and I just want to tell my circle, thank you guys for always cheering me on since day one. Thank you for clapping for me the loudest and truly wanting to see me to win. So some of my family is here. I'm the baby of eight, eight children, me. So some of them are here. My brother, who just surprised me, my eyeballs are not sweating, my eyeballs are not sweating. He just flew in from Minnesota. My sister-in-law, I'm going to get you. I know, so they're all here. Those loud people, that's mine, those are my people. So I just want to tell them thank you, because as a baby of eight, they have taught me what it means to show up. This is their showing up right here. They have supported me, they have been my first friends, my role models, my protectors, my confidant, and so through each of your own stories, you've taught me the meaning of persevering when life gets tough. Thank you for your unwavering support. My nieces and nephews, I want you guys to remember, you have limitless potential. To my son, Mason Oliver, is he paying attention? I hope that I inspire you daily. Your cool confidence and your unshakable tenacity makes you a force to be reckoned with, kid. Thank you all for being my big support. To my A.C. New family, for the last five years, I've learned so much from you all. Hopefully, in some ways, I've challenged you, pushed you, grew you, probably irritated you, in a way that has made you better. Continue to grow and challenge yourself daily. Continue to keep kids first and do better than you did yesterday. Thank you for helping me to grow. I've built relationships here that I will cherish always. We will forever be united. I'll see you in the streets. To my hat rack, my slow blink partner, my work boo, Louis. Oh, man, come on, come on. God knew what he was doing when he put us together five years ago. There would never be a better dynamic duo. I have learned so much from you. Thank you for seeing me, being my softer side, and as I move on to this next chapter, I know I still have all your love and support, and we will always be family. So sports people, Scottie Pippen had Jordan, Shaq had Kobe, D Wade had LeBron, Emmitt Smith had Troy Aikman, go Cowboys. I have Regina Jackson. Jackson, thank you for allowing me to unapologetically be who I am and show up in all my greatness. You saw my raw talent and poured your all into me. You kept me focused on my leadership trajectory. You helped me to identify what I value, focus on progress over perfection. Thank you for providing me the space to not only grow and develop my leadership, but to make an impact. You empowered me to not be afraid of failure, but to use it as an opportunity to grow and always be better. I am forever grateful for your leadership and continuous mentoring. To my Dr. James P. Terry family, I look forward to getting to know you all, getting to do this work with you, and supporting and leading you with courage and excellence. Thank you.
Our fourth recommendation is for Gray Elementary. Would Elise Quisenberry, please come up to the lectern? All right. Ms. Quisenberry has completed 10 years in the field of education. She started her career as a fifth-grade teacher in Garland ISD. She later transitioned to middle school and began working as an avid instructor, followed by serving as an instructional support role in Plano ISD. In 2020, Elise began serving as an administrator at Gray Elementary and North Mesquite High School. She earned a Bachelor's of Science from Texas A&amp;M University and a Master's in Educational Administration from Lamar University. Elise Quisenberry.
Hopefully, I don't mess this up for all of us. First, to Dr. Rivera, the board, and the cabinet, I want to say thank you. Three years ago, when I joined the Mesquite ISD family, I could have never imagined the way I would feel supported, valued, and inspired to grow in my leadership capacity the way that I have. This district has truly taught me how to exemplify the value to put people first. To my village of support in the back and watching online, I would not be here today without you. Thank you for allowing me to fearlessly pursue each and every goal I've ever set for myself and celebrating me in each and every season of my life. I want to give a special thanks to Dr. Jennifer LaPlante, who took a chance on me in the middle of a pandemic and trusted me to lead alongside her in one of the most trying years we've seen. I also want to thank my stallion family and Mr. TJ Reed for allowing me to take a huge leap into high school this year and showing me that even on a campus of thousands, you are part of the family. Lastly, and most certainly not least, to my Gray family. Not many people have the opportunity to return to a place that feels like home. Several years ago, someone near and dear to me said, if you allow it to, Gray will change your life for the better. Never learned something to be so accurate. I'm stepping back onto a campus that exudes excellence in every way possible, and I promise to uphold that excellence as I lead the way, the Gator Way. Thank you.
So, Mr. President, those are the four administrative recommendations that we have. This is an action item.
We almost heard their audition. But I apologize, I wish what we could have done first was to introduce each of you and then had the vote to hire you, and then invite you up to the podium, but we did that a little bit, got the cart before the horse, but regardless, we will now entertain a motion to hire these four. Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Whitlock and a second by Mr. Rose to hire Alicia Chapman as the avid coordinator, Molly Laird as the principal of Tosh Elementary School, Irina Mason as the principal of James Terry Middle School, and Alice Quisenberry as the principal of W.O. Gray Elementary. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Congratulations, and I'm pleased that it looks like all four of these new staff members have brought family with them, and their support is so incredibly, it's a requirement for all of these positions, and we thank you so much for all that our family members do for our staff. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is an effectiveness report on the facilities management, and I believe we're going to hear from Mr. Sir? Well, based on the board's request, we will have about a seven-minute break. The time is now 7:15 PM, and we will resume our meeting. Next item on the agenda is an effectiveness report under facilities management. We're going to hear from Mr. Scott Owens. Sir, where did, have you seen Scott Owens?
I knew this was coming. Anhil's mad at me because I didn't wear a bowtie. And he's got a story to tell about that, but I'm going to do it today.
Go ahead, Mr. Owens, appreciate you being here.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. I'd like to personally thank y'all for the support you do for Mesquite Independent School District. Personally, I lived in Mesquite my whole life, and y'all always keep us heading in the right direction, and I appreciate y'all. Thank you very much. Hopefully, I'll keep this short. I'd like to introduce a few key players for facilities management. I've got Tim Kensworthy, my energy manager here, Lonnie Womack, one of my project managers, and Dan Contreras, another project manager. They both have, or excuse me, they all three, sorry, have 75 years of service for facilities management, which is outstanding. And they all graduated from Mesquite Schools. I would like to show you a video of just a few projects that we conducted in facilities management.
Keeping all facilities, campuses, machinery, and grounds functioning at peak performance is crucial to providing a safe and healthy learning and working environment for students and teachers that allows them to learn and work at the highest possible levels. This is the purpose of the facilities management department, and they do everything they can to support the mission and goals of Mesquite ISD. 157 employees make up facilities management, and they maintain 60-plus buildings and facilities throughout the district. Among that massive amount of work, they take on a variety of special projects throughout the year.
So we needed a new conference space as we were growing, and we also needed one room to fit all 130 employees here at the SEC for training, professional learning. And so we contacted facilities management and the business office, and they came in, and within a matter of weeks, they took half of our warehouse, turned it into offices. They gave us a beautiful conference room where we could fit, updated it with the proper technology, and also built some more offices down the hall, and it was wonderful. They were easy to work with, they kept me informed, and can't thank them enough.
Potteet High School had an extreme need to have a dance studio, and at the beginning of last year, I started having conversations with our dance instructor, because we really want to grow the program, and we needed a facility that our students could flourish in, so that the program could flourish also. I had a conversation with Scott Owen and Daniel Contreras, and they both came over here, and we kind of talked about what is the needs of the facility and the space, and what are some space here at Potteet High School that we have. We had a couple of meetings where they would come over and say, this is what we're looking at, here are some of our ideas, what are your thoughts, what are your feedbacks? We included the dance instructor also in those conversations, and as you can see from the pictures, that our dance studio is top-notch, and so we are super excited, but most importantly, we're super thankful and super blessed with the facilities and the hard work that they did for us here for our students at Potteet High School.
I have really appreciated working with Scott and his team. He has worked on a couple of projects that we needed here at Transportation, one of them being a new training portable for us, also our dispatch area. We actually extended out, and we also have two new office areas for some router positions and also just for some extra work. And then the big, big project that they undertook was a new parking lot for our buses. And every time that I call Scott, he is on board. He's like, yeah, we can do it. And the time and effort that they put into it, we really appreciate the partnership that we have with them, and, you know, just a quick call, and he's on it. So we really appreciate that at Transportation.
My kindergarten teachers came to me with a need. The carpet in their classrooms was original to the building. I called facilities management, and they came out and walked the building. I've received a timeline as to when the work could get done. We gave the teachers options. The teachers chose their best option was work over Thanksgiving break. At the end of the project, Scott Owens and Lonnie Womack walked the building with us to make sure everything was to our satisfaction. Facilities management did a fantastic job, and they were quite easy to work with.
So my, our teachers told me that they had the possibility of maybe getting some space at West Mesquite High School, and then I shortly got a call and an email from Scott Owens that said, hey, we'd like you to come take a look and see if this has the markers of what your teachers are looking for. And Scott took us through the space and said, well, where, would you like what, what serves the kids best, what sort of projects might you be doing in this space? Facilities management was excellent to work with through this project. They kept us on track and on budget, and were really generous with their time and resources.
Facilities management is a department that works seamlessly with campuses and facilities to ensure optimal work and learning environments for Mesquite ISD employees and students, and they will continue to do so in the future.
I'm not going to mention how much it cost me for those people to say those good things about me. But no, I appreciate the kind words that they said, but in really, besides projects this year, we completed about 38,000 work orders to date. That's almost 3,000... That's almost 3,000 more than we had completed at this time last year. I'll entertain any questions at this time.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I just know that when there's an emergency at the school and that fleet of white truck shows up, everybody knows it's going to be okay because the guys are here to fix it. And I know you guys are facing a storm coming with a lot of the security things that are up and going, and your team has just jumped on top of that and tried to stay with it, and we appreciate everything you guys do, really do.
I want to say a few words also, Scott. You know, when, you know, last week, when everybody was wondering what was going to happen in terms of weather-related decisions in our school district, I was on the phone with Scott, and his people walked every single building in our, in our school district to ensure that we were ready if we were to make the call to Come Back Friday. So, I want to thank you and your people, because I know it was a lot on a cold, rain, icy day to get out, but you guys did it with a smile, and you actually beat the 3:00 timeline that I gave you, right? And so, thank you very much for your leadership in the department and put it related to your staff.
Thank you.
Scott, one of the things, Scott, the projects that you and your department perform are professional quality. I mean, it's true craftsmanship, and you can walk into a facility that you all have remodeled or done whatever you've done, and you can't tell any difference between a professional contractor that we would hire a third party, but you and your staff, those guys back there, do a fantastic job. So, thank you all very much for all you do for us.
Thank you.
We'll now move to instruction to conduct a public hearing on the annual performance Dr. Hammett, do you need to address us before we open the public hearing?
I was just going to remind you, I have a, just a quick slide that shows everyone what's in the annual report. These are all the things that are required by TEC, so go for it.
Do you need to say anything regarding that?
No, sir.
Okay. At this time, we will close our regular meeting and open the public hearing for the 2021-22 Annual Performance Report. If you would like to address this board regarding this APR, we'll hear from you now. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and reconvene our regular meeting. Next item on the agenda is under administration. It's an action item to adopt all orders regarding the, relating to the May 6, 2023 trustee election. Motion to adopt all orders relating to the May 6, 2023 trustee election by Mr. Rose and seconded by Ms. Collier. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is a discussion item regarding the options for our 2023-2024 school calendar. So, what we're going to do at this time, we'll wait to hear Laura Jobe's presentation, and then if you signed up to address the board, we'll hear from you after Ms. Jobe has completed her presentation.
Okay, well, tonight, I'm here to share some information that we have gathered as we explored the option of an innovative calendar for the 2023-2024 school year. Research tells us that the teacher is the most important factor in a student's academic success, and that is what is driving this process to, to explore some other calendars to see if that can help us recruit and retain more teachers. We have a desire to ensure that we have a quality teacher in every single classroom in Mesquite ISD, and as you know, we are facing a nationwide shortage. As a matter of fact, this school year, we started with a shortage of, well, we had 108 teacher vacancies in August. We have recovered somewhat from that now, but we are trying to make sure that we can meet the needs of our teachers. They tell us that they need time. They need planning time more than anything, so that is what our impetus was for, exploring these other options. I'm going to give you the results of the survey that we did recently, but I wanted to explain some of the things that we've done in preparation before that. We had staff members who attended two seminars on a four-day instructional week. One was done in Athens and one was hosted by Region 10. We have been through at least 15 different calendar drafts. We have explored many, many, many options and ideas. We settled on three that we kind of wanted to focus on, a four-day version, a traditional calendar, and what we called a hybrid version. We also convened a calendar committee, which I'll tell you about, and we'd actually talked with students who were on the superintendent's council, some seniors, and they gave us their input on specifically the four-day option, and they were, it was very enlightening to hear what they had to say. So, when we, when we hosted our committee, we met over three days and divided the committee members into different groups. There were about 100 people or so who participated. We invited professionals, paraprofessionals, auxiliary, and parents to take part in those meetings because we really wanted to get a lot of different perspectives. Our principals were kind enough to provide recommendations for us, but we also invited key representatives from departments like athletics and special education and fine arts, because we wanted to be sure we were covering all of our bases. The first draft that they looked at was the four-day draft, and here are just some of their common likes. We asked them what they liked about each version and what they had concerns about regarding each version. First was the four-day, and these are just some of the things that they mentioned over and over about that particular draft. These were some of the concerns that they mentioned about the four-day calendar, and I didn't list every single concern that was brought up, but these were some of the more common ones. The next draft was a hybrid version, and I will just tell you that that particular one included more school holidays and more designated days for planning. But as the committee meeting grew on, it appeared that that was probably the least-liked version, and, but these are some of the things they did like about it. I did want to point those out. These are some of the concerns they had about it, and there weren't, there weren't a lot of comments about that compared to the, the four-day. I think the four-day was pretty overwhelming to the committee members when they, when they looked at that and talked about some of the, some of the ins and outs of that. So, the hybrid draft, we could tell, was not, was not going to be a winner with that group. Then we asked them to participate in a thought exchange, and if you're not familiar with thought exchange, it allows you to ask a single question, a group of people. They can enter, it'll say, it'll ask them to answer the question, and then other people will get to rate their answers, rate their thoughts on a scale of one to five, and it kind of shows you some trends and some, some ideas that are surfacing as leading ideas. So, we had 86 people who participated in the thought exchange. 60 of them entered thoughts, and 1,305 ratings were given. This was the question that they were presented with. We asked them to say, "If you had to choose today, based on this information, which calendar version would be your favorite or your preferred version?" Not everyone actually followed those directions and picked one, but of those who did, five of them selected the traditional calendar, which would be similar to what we have today. Seven selected the hybrid calendar, and 30 participants said they preferred the four-day calendar. And I just pulled some of the top thoughts. These are the top five thoughts that were rated in that thought exchange, and I'm not going to read those to you, but you can see that there is generally a theme there. The little score will show you, it'll show you, one of 60 means it was the top thought, rated 4.3, that means 4.3 stars out of 5. And then these are the last two. So, then we moved on to a survey, which you, I'm sure you're very familiar with. We ran this survey from January 27th to February 6th. We sent out 33,685 invitations by email. We decided to try every contact for every, for every student contacts one and two, and then we also contacted all of, all of our staff, sent out several reminders, that sort of thing. We wanted to make sure we heard from as many people as possible, because as I said, we're trying to capture as many perspectives on this question as we can. The survey primarily focused on the four-day instructional week because that seemed to be the one that rose to the top in terms of having those interests from our committee participants. So, that's, and that's the one who obviously that is the most different from what we're doing today. So, we wanted to see what people's opinions were. We received 10,503 parent responses. Our staff response rate was about 69%, and we, I just, as you look at these numbers that I'm going to show you, I just wanted to point out that if you are a parent of a child in Mesquite ISD and a staff member, you were counted in both categories. Not that you got two votes. I, we did separate the, and they weren't, they weren't even really votes. They were just opinions or answers to questions, but we wanted to make sure that we got both sides of, of those groups counted. And then I also wanted to say, yes, this was not a vote. It wasn't pick one or pick the other. It was just, please provide your feedback to us. So, obviously, we are trying to recruit and retain teachers with some of these new ideas, so we asked about the impact of that and how, how a four-day instructional week would impact their decision to stay with the district. You can see those, those numbers there. We were curious about the greatest impact on their decision. What, what is it that keeps you here in Mesquite ISD? And obviously, salary was the, the highest-rated option, but then a manageable workload was number two at 26%. If MISD were to adopt a four-day instructional week, would it create a scheduling hardship for your family? And this, this question was posed to staff only, and the reason for that was we were thinking if they happened to have children in other school districts, would it cause a problem if they had a longer day here, you know, having to pick up their kids and that sort of thing? So, that's what the, the purpose of this question was, and you can see their responses We were also curious if this might bring, have, if this might cause some of our employees to bring their students to Mesquite ISD if they're not currently enrolled here, and so that's, that's what the impetus was here. I, I pulled straight numbers there, so 105 employees said that they were, were very likely to move their students here. That's how you can kind of read those. Then we asked overall, would this impact, would a four-day instructional week impact your family positively? And you can see those, those answers there for all three groups. We also mentioned that we were considering a Friday enrichment program, and that would give parents an opportunity, parents of elementary students a place to, to their, their children on Fridays, and we just wanted to kind of gauge interest in that. Transportation would also be provided for that option if it was necessary, and we talked about having that at one elementary school for every feeder pattern, and you can see the interest there. We, we actually asked the number, about the number of kids they were likely to enroll in that type of program, and then converted those numbers to these, so. We also talked about additional meals for our students because we know that many of our families depend on meals from our, from our campuses, and so we just were curious about if, if we provided, you know, with the longer day, if we provided a separate option for students, and then take-home meals on Thursdays to, to provide meals for the Friday holiday, how many people would be interested in that? And here you can see their response to this, and parents only were asked this question. If Mesquite ISD switched to a four-day instructional week, how likely is it that you would keep your children enrolled in Mesquite ISD? This was asked of all parents as well. Of the ones who responded, you can see what their responses were, and then I also equated those with, with numbers of responses. And then, you know, the big question, considering the information you have now, how supportive would you be if Mesquite ISD was, went to a four-day instructional week model? And here you can see their varying responses across all levels and all groups. I know that there's a lot of questions that are coming out of this survey and things that people wanted to know. We have been gradually working through those, those questions as a cabinet and as department heads. This is where we are today on, on, on a school schedule and some of our plans. We're looking at a 493-minute day. Today, we have a 435 minutes, so that would be 58 additional minutes we would add to the school day. As you know, TEA requires that we have 75,600 minutes for each school year. That's how we get there on this calendar. The first day of school would be Monday, August 7th. The last day would be Thursday, May 30th. That is just a couple of days after Memorial Day but before June 1st. And then these are the proposed current start times. Again, these are not final. We are still working with these, but our high schools would begin actually first. We'd be flip-flopping those schedules so that rather than elementary being our first start of the day, high school would be, they would start at 7:30 a.m. and at 3:43. And then you can see how the other, the other schools fall in line after that. We do need to maintain a staggered schedule due to our transportation needs to make sure we can get all the kids where they need to go. And then we are also examining a modified block schedule for high schools so that we would be able to maintain some of the double-block classes that we currently have, so. Are there any questions that I can answer? I will try.
Tell you what I, what I would, what I would like to do is go ahead and hear from our patrons that have signed up to speak.
Sure.
And, and then once we hear from them, then you can come back to the podium, and we'll, we have Dr. Rivera here as well. We have other members of our cabinet here, and so we'll have some discussion. I think it's important for our community to know that no decision has been made regarding this topic right now. There are some in the community that feel like that Dr. Rivera has made the recommendation to the board, or the board has decided to conduct this new four-day instructional calendar, and we have not done that. We're simply looking at this right now, and we're going to have a discussion this evening, and if we do decide to go with this for our 2023-24 school calendar, it must be done no later than March 6th, which will be our next board meeting in a few weeks. So, if you'll step away, Ms. Jobe, and we have four people that have signed up to speak. The first one, we will hear from Christina McHaleb. Christina, if you're here and you'll come forward and give us for the record, if you will, your address, please. And you'll have, each, each person addressing the board will have a maximum of three minutes.
Okay.
We're glad you're here. Go ahead.
Did you name my address?
Name and address.
Christina McHaleb, 521 Country View, Garland, Texas, 75043. Okay. Okay. Members of the board, my name is Christina McHaleb. I'm a parent of a recent graduate at Potteet and a current ninth grader at Potteet. My concerns implementing the four-day school week within our district is specifically for high school students. My concerns today center around athletics, fine arts, and the continuing education students. I fear if we implement the four-day week, our programs will suffer. I worry if our athletics and band students, I worry if they will have adequate time to practice since they will begin the day so much earlier. I know the City of Mesquite noise ordinance says you cannot make noise before 6:59. That does not give them a lot of time to practice. I also worry that our band students would miss out on the ability to use the stadium to rehearse and unless sports activities in the evening were shuffled during the season, and I don't see that happening. Not to mention the fact that they are not permitted to practice outside when temperatures are over 98 degrees. That's basically all of August, September, and some of October. These students will need to come to school on Fridays still. This would be addition, additionally to the long days, which would cause them to, if they have to practice after school, they lose the ability to have a part-time job. So, the whole, most of these kids can have a part-time job. No, they won't because they have to stay after more. And also, the teachers that have to come in at that time, are they going to be compensated for the time that they have to come in on Fridays and watch the children and make sure that they have adequate time to be competitive with all the other districts that are not changing? Will our CTE students be able to get all of their time for certifications? I'm not sure how other schools are, but Potteet is excellent at letting kids do everything. They work together to make sure that they're, they get to do everything, and if they single-block athletics and band and have a modified schedule, they'll lose half the time, so they won't get to practice either athletics. They won't get to have what they should. Also, from the limited research I've done, which hasn't been much time since, we only heard about this when the survey came out, the four-day, the four-day week was initially for rural areas of attendance when, for the, and attendance was good because the students for rural areas of attendance when, for the, and attendance was good because the students didn't have to stay home and put in time with their families on the land and the farm. And I don't think our students have the problem that they have to stay home and work on a farm. Additionally, the unintended benefit that the educators got for, or getting educators with mid-range work experience seems to have only happened because the surrounding districts couldn't offer other incentives. I know we just passed a tax increase to help raise the cost of our, or raise salaries. Our district needs to have students in seats in schools, and I worry about the decline of academic performance in lower-income schools because no other large district has done this. I don't want our kids to be a guinea pig. That's it. Sorry.
Perfect.
Thank you, Ms. McHaleb. Next up is Craig Johnson. If you will, Mr. Johnson, state your name for the record and your address, please, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, sir. My name is Craig Johnson at 6416 Brookmeadow Drive, Mesquite, Texas, 75150. And I have some concerns about the four-day work week as well. Mine primarily is student discipline and, well, basically that, the, and it's, and the educational portion of it. But you can look at any of the Mesquite Facebook pages, the Parents of Mesquite, any of that, and all their complaint, half of them are nothing but complaints about issues that are going on to the schools, kids running around hallways, not being in the classrooms. Well, with the A/B schedule you have now, it's roughly a 90-minute class. If you extend, if you extend the day, those kids are going to be there even longer. How are, how do you do the discipline with that? You're already having problems with it on a regular school day. How are you going to do it when they're there an hour longer? And then, I mean, that, and piggyback a little bit with what she said, I also have two children in school. One of them's in swimming, one of them's in band and orchestra. So, how is that going to affect them? So, my primary thing is just the discipline. You look at any of the Parents of Mesquite pages, and that's all they talk about is the kids running around during hallways, you know, doing whatever they're doing in the bathrooms and the various hallways, everything else. So, I'm just, like I said, I am concerned with the discipline, the however you want to, however you wish to phrase it, how is that going to apply when the kids are there an hour longer? It already seems to be an issue with a standard school day. Well, now, you're going to add 58 minutes to the day, so that's a whole extra, well, for lack of a better, whole extra hour that you now have to figure out what you're going to do with these children that they're already having problems with. Pull my glasses up so I can see. What was the other one I had? Well, that was, that was pretty much it. It's, mine's primary is the discipline, and like I said, she covered most everything before me, the fine arts portion of it, since I have a swimmer and a band child. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next up is Kim Davis. Ms. Davis, for the record, if you'll state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Kim Davis, and my address is 2212 North Beltline Road, apartment 138, Mesquite, Texas, The MEA wants to thank Dr. Rivera, the school board, and the administration for organizing several committees to meet in person, making a four-day calendar ready for the committees to study, and sending a survey out where all personnel can give their input. We thank you for being transparent in doing this research on districts where a four-day work week works and listening to personnel concerns. We all want to do what is best for our students, staff, and community. First, I would like to speak as president of the MEA and as an executive board today. The majority voted for the four-day calendar. On a personal note, I am in agreement with the four-day work week calendar. I can now schedule doctor's appointments for those days, and I do not have to take off and run the risk of a colleague having to cover my class because there aren't enough substitutes. I can have dedicated planning time, and that will be longer than a class period, to plan quality lessons, questions, and activities for my students. I will have more time within a class period so that my students can practice more with me and not have to worry about forgetting when they get home. We look forward to working in partnership with the Mesquite community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. And the last card I have is from Kevin Morgan. Mr. Morgan, if you'll give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Absolutely. Kevin Morgan, 3010 Livo Drive in Rollat, Texas, 75080. Thank you for letting me talk to this board. I have no doubt in my mind that this is the greatest board in the state of Texas, and I would call us number one because we are number one. And my, my point on this, on this particular issue is I understand how competitive it is out there, and I understand to get teachers and how competitive it is to keep and retain our teachers. I feel like this, this idea, this calendar is, is a way to bring teachers in, possibly even more students, and retain teachers from leaving other, to go to other districts for more money, because I know we're going to increase our pay based on the fact that we did get our VADER passed and that things are looking up in that direction. I took, I sent out a Google form today, actually, and got 29 responses from my, my school at Canada Elementary, and 27 out of the 29 were for the four-day work schedule. I wish more people stayed here because part of the, what we have in our district, when I see, like, our people, our Applicore nominees, when I see our students coming through, reaching fantastic goals and heights and what they're learning, when I hear, you know, people getting recruited up in, within our district and getting these new positions, I mean, the sense of pride, 21 years I've been with the district, 25 years in education, and the pride of our district and the fact that we lead the way, we're not really followers, we lead the way. I feel like this, this four-week, this four-day work week will help to lead the way because I, I feel, I feel like when I hear things that people said, I want to be open, and oftentimes, it can change your perspective because you look at things from other people's points of view. And I did listen to what they say, said, and I feel like some, some really good points. But I also feel like this is coming. It's coming. And a very famous race car driver, Ricky Bobby, said, "You're either first or you're last." And, and I want to be first because we're number one. And I think when we do this first, right, we're going to be the district that people are going to say, "They did it first, and it's working." Because if we don't do it 23-24, we're going to do it 24-25, or we're going to do it 25-26. And I don't think we're going to be first when we do that. So, so I'm fully on, and my, and my school echoes my sentiments, and thanks again for letting me, see you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Those are all the cards that I have this evening. We're going to, we're going to have a discussion amongst the board, and we want to do it in a, in a uniform way, should we say. Dr. Rivera, do you have anything you need to say before the board members?
Well, yes. I wanted to say in terms of, I took some notes as some of you were speaking, and so, I don't know if you've been keeping track, and there's a lot of stuff going on, but we actually, this board had approved some athletic pavilions that would help with the practicing in the heat. Those pavilions should be finished, well, some of them are going to be finished by the summer, and we continue to build and to ensure that not only, they're called athletic pavilions, but band can practice on them as well and at fine arts. All programs can practice under those, and they reduce about 10 degrees in the heat of the summer to ensure that we can actually get that quality practice time. Something else that was mentioned that I want to make sure that is clear is that we have accounted for all the required CTE minutes that are needed for our students to continue to get those certification, industry-based certifications. And I believe that was something that was not clearly stated, but I want to make sure that we, we addressed that and we state that before the discussion occurs.
Who has, who has questions?
Go first.
Go ahead.
No, why don't you moderate and just, I'm sure everybody has a question? And so, just kind of moderate and go through.
Well. Go ahead, Gary.
First of all, thank you for everybody that spoke and gave us your thoughts, and this is a, this is a big decision, and I want to echo what Mr. Everett said. We haven't made a decision on this yet. School districts like church, there are no secrets, and there's a huge grapevine. A lot of times, that's good, a lot of times, that's bad, but we have not made a decision on this yet. One concern that I've heard from, and I have myself, and I'd like to hear from Michael on the fine arts, about the deal with the practice times with Fridays and all those kinds, just kind of give us your thoughts, what would be challenging for you in, with this new schedule?
Yeah, one of our biggest challenges with the four-day week would be that our band programs specifically, our marching band programs in the fall, specifically run on a different UIL regulation than the other programs. So, even other fine arts programs don't run on that regulation. They run on a calendar week instead of a school week. So, their week starts at 12:01 on Monday and ends at 11:59 on Sunday, and they only get eight hours in that particular time to rehearse, no matter if the school is in session or not. So, UIL regulations for everyone else is an eight-hour-a-school week, 12:01 on the first instructional day, ending with the last bell on the last instructional day. So, even theater and dance and orchestra, they don't run on that same thing. So, that, that presents a significant challenge to us on how we do rehearsals for the, specifically the marching bands. So, it's not, it's not something we can't solve, and it's not something that we can't look at and do. There are programs that are doing this, but they're small school programs that don't use, generally use their entire eight hours a week. And I will say, our bands use every second of their eight hours every single week. There are some regulations, so just to be completely transparent, there are some regulations that on a performance day, they do get an extra hour on that performance day before their performance. So, if they have a performance on Friday night, there's an extra hour built in on that. And a performance on Saturday, which many of our bands do marching contests on Saturday, there's an extra hour with that. So, just to be completely transparent, they do have that extra built in. But if we continue to rehearse what we rehearsed during the school week, they couldn't extend rehearsal on Friday any longer than they normally do. So, typically, on Friday, we do an hour in the morning, and then an hour, they'll meet an hour before the game and do, and do some rehearsal. So, it really doesn't extend their rehearsal at all. The presented challenges for some of the rehearsals is more so that we, we don't want to, we, we share a lot of students. We share a lot of students with athletics. We share a lot of students with other, with other CTE, with theater. We do a lot of band and orchestra. You heard parents say band and orchestra. We have a lot of that together. So, if we're trying to squeeze all of those things into one Friday, you know, when they go to school on Friday, they do have every single class period, so it's, it's scheduled out for them. So, once again, not a problem we can't solve, right? We can schedule things out. We can be creative with schedules. But that, that does present a challenge for rehearsal for us as well. So, and then, do we end up having, 50% of the school, we have one of our traditional high schools, that 50% of the school is involved in the arts? And I'm not aware of the, how many of those kids are also involved in athletics? But then, to what point do we basically just have them come to school all day Friday? Which isn't also a bad thing, right? Because we want our kids to be involved, and if they're at school, they're not anywhere else doing other things, right? So, we, they're, like I said, they're significant challenges. They're not challenges that can't be solved, but they are, there are challenges, and we would be the first district with a complete fine arts program to do this. I did some research over the last few weeks on different school districts, and most of those school districts don't have full-fledged orchestra programs. Most of those school districts don't have necessarily drama programs. Most of them have band and choir. Some of them, and they'll have a drill team component, but they don't have a full dance component with that. So, that, you know, we would, we would almost be building a new airplane. Once again, we have a lot of creative people in this district, and that's one of the things that drew me to this district, that I love about what all the people that I've worked with so far, is that we have a completely creative group of people that, that can solve problems. But there are challenges that we will face, and we may, we may have some time that we go, "Ooh, that was not the right call. That wasn't the right thing to do, and now we have to reverse course." So, it may, it may cause some of that. But that's, that's where we're at, and that's some of our challenges specifically with the arts.
Can you, without getting off subject, if there's a five-cent version of why is that UIL standard different for band as opposed, what's the meaning behind that?
So, without, without mincing words, there were bands around the state that were abusing the eight-hour rule, that they would call their band up to school at, you know, 6:30 on Saturday morning and rehearse all the way until their, you know, 5 o'clock competition that evening. And they would take advantage of every school holiday, and they would rehearse for six or seven hours that school holiday. And honestly, UIL thought that was not in the spirit of the rules and what we should do. So, the UIL made the decision that the marching band specifically would go on the calendar week instead of the school week.
Okay. So, you would not be able to call a marching band rehearsal on Friday? Is that what you're saying?
You would be able to call a marching band rehearsal. We would just have to be creative with our eight hours. So, in other, in other genres of, of extracurricular activities, they would be able to call a significant rehearsal on Friday. So, let's use theater as an example. They would be able to call a significant rehearsal on Friday, and that would not count against their eight hours outside the school day, where marching band, that would count against their eight hours outside the school day.
Okay.
Does athletics have something similar to that? Cody, does athletics have something similar to that, where you have, like a time limit?
We do. We get eight hours outside of the school day, but.
Mr. Groves, come, come to the microphone, please.
All right, and dress up as nice as Scott and Ryan.
We do. Athletics does have to follow an eight-hour rule. You know, the thing for us where this is kind of a non-factor for us, we're already at a competitive advantage compared to most school districts, and we are block schedule, which means we get our kids for an extended duration during the period. You know, I came from a school district about 10 years ago prior that athletic periods were 47 minutes long. Mix in the time of getting dressed and getting dressed to go back to class, really, you're only working your kids out for 40-plus minutes. And so, I don't see during the time period, as long as we stay consistent and get some kind of modified block, whether we give eight periods or whatever we end up doing, as long as you're getting that hour and a half time period with the kids. And then, in addition, most of our games and contests are on Fridays. Well, your practice time after school, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, two hours after school plus your hour and a half during the period, that's a long practice. So, your Friday game days, we're not really practicing. We're bringing the kids up, or we would be bringing them up, film, video, meetings, feeding the kids, preparation for the game, and it's not really a practice outside. So, we do have to follow that eight-hour, but I don't really think in season, we really get close to that because of the length of time our athletic periods are.
Okay.
So, for us, but we do have to follow that eight-hour.
Do you see some significant challenges with this, or does it seem like it's just a scheduling thing?
For, there were obviously challenges, never doing this before. There, there will be some things that would naturally come up if this is the direction we go. But again, as long as we can, as long as that, that block schedule is held, that is the, that's the benefit for our kids right there, for fine arts, athletics. I think that's the critical part. If we were to lose that and then lose a day, now we're putting our kids at a competitive disadvantage, I would believe. But with the block schedule, in addition, the UIL has done things just in recent years that when you're not in season, they've given you an extra hour. You can work out your kids after school, strength and conditioning. Things are being built in to where kids are going to, they want the kids after school. They want them working out. They want them working out with trained coaches that are certified and things like CPR and first aid. They want them around us. So, they're giving us extended time with the kids. But I don't, I don't, honestly, whether it's four days or five days, the fact that we would be Fridays off, that's kind of critical for us. If it was Mondays off, it's not a game day. There's so many more challenges with that needing to be a required practice day for us, so many of the kids, I mean, just, they're going to show up on game days. They may not show up on practice days. So, for us, there, I don't see as many challenges. It's a reality. You know, it's like Labor Day every single week. You know, it's like Labor Day every single week.
Cody, and I'll address this to Ms. Stringer, is there something about practice on non-school days? Is that a thing or is there something?
Not when you're in season, when you're in.
Is that only before school starts or we had, I was talking with someone who said that there's maybe something about an issue where if it's a non-school day, can you even call it practice?
When you're in season, you can, because already our kids would, they're able to come work out on Saturdays. You know, when you're out of season, you have to follow some pretty strict rules on when you can practice. There's only a certain amount of times, you can't practice after school, except for the exception, I just told you, all the U I L passed that you can work out your kids, strength and conditioning, an hour after school. So there's, there are rules when you're in season and out of season.
Does that apply for fine arts as well or is there?
No, we don't have an in-season and out-of-season, we're pretty much always in season. Band is the only one that has two different seasons, but it's the same, it's the same rules no matter what. Concert band doesn't fall under the same rules as marching band, was, as what I was talking about, the calendar week versus the school week. Concert band goes back to the school week, it's not, it's not the same rule as the marching band. That's a specific marching band rule. One of the differences in us and what Cody said, just to be once again transparent, is that we do also have long, long periods, we double block our kids. But the difference between a football team and a marching band is that marching band combines every single student in the band program over four or five periods together. So the after-school component is when the marching show design that you see on Friday night and Saturday, that's when that's put together. So that doesn't, that cannot happen in class because we don't have all of the kids in class together.
That's when your symphonic band, honors band and beginners are all coming together after school.
Yeah, that's right, everybody's together at school. That is, the marching band is representative of the entirety of the band program. Every student that is in the band program in the high school is in the marching band. So that, that, that's, that's when we bring that together. So that is a little bit difference between athletics and us, even though I will, I will echo what Cody said, that we do have a strong advantage over other districts because we do see our kids an hour and a half in class every day. Our kids perform better because we have so much instructional time with them. I, and I echo exactly what Cody said about that.
So I have a question. So Laura, it's more challenged, say the four day week was Tuesday through Friday than Monday through Thursday?
That's what we heard from other districts that have implemented a four day week, yes.
Say that again.
We did, we talked with several other districts or heard from several other districts, looked at, looked at research. It is, most of them do Monday through Thursday, they just felt like that schedule worked out better for athletics and for, for other reasons.
Okay.
And the other, the other part was that if you do Mondays off, we already did one of our calendars, I don't remember if it was F, G or H. But we noticed that you would have to go to school because most of the federal holidays are on Monday. So to make up the, the required minutes, you either have to go longer than 58 minutes or extend beyond Memorial Day week, weekend, that week, go into June. And that wasn't very favorable with the committee.
We, we talked about the kids that have athletics that have band. What about those kids that don't have anything? What are the plans for them? I know we talked about maybe having a school open on Fridays or something like that. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, so, so some of the, the elementary kids will have an opportunity. And as you saw in the survey, I believe it was 30% of our parents expressed they were interested in an enrichment program. And that enrichment program will be the going deeper into the teaks, into the standards, getting enrichment activities, tutoring and things of that nature. One of the things that we got, and we didn't think about this, it was actually our student focus group. Dr. Fields and I were, and, and Ms. Joe were able to facilitate a focus group with some of the high school students. And they said they were, they appreciated this consideration because the kids that were in dual credit AP courses currently spend Saturday and Sunday catching up on homework and doing everything. If they're involved in band, if they're involved in athletics, they, all their evening times taking up practice and rehearsals and all that, so they utilize Saturday and Sunday now. This will give an opportunity to use Friday, Saturday and still have a day break. And then some of the other students also mentioned that now they, they work Saturday and Sunday, they have to help their families. Their words, not mine, now they could use Friday, Saturday and Sunday to work and not having to use the evenings because they just go to school. So that's to answer your question about the enrichment in terms of where kids can go to be in a safe place, also being fed and, you know, having a, a good place to be at.
So if you're doing four days, then you've got your kids at school longer during the day. And then the fifth day, what if you've got kids who need scaffolding? That are used to having this extra time to be with their teacher and things like that? We're gonna squish it into four, yes? So is there tutoring and things offered? There's nothing open in the middle schools and high schools on that fifth day, just that one elementary campus?
That's right, we, we're planning on enrichment for elementary school only, but they are getting an extra hour during the school day, Monday through Thursday. So your, your minutes are actually the same, your instructional minutes are the same.
Question about the, what's the thought process on starting high school at 7:30? Why was that, what's, is that buses or?
Well, no, that's actually going to address, it actually came about with the first focus group, I believe one of the band, I, I believe it was Tish Downs, it was talking about if they, if we, if high school finishes last, they will not have the practice time that they have now in the day. So moving, and, and also if you think about athletics as well, so let's just talk about volleyball to talk about something else other than football. Volleyball, if you have a double header and it goes to three sets, these games wouldn't be, wouldn't be able to start before 6:00 P M on our current schedule. And then if you fade, if you play three sets, three sets to game, you, the kids wouldn't even get to the campus at 11, which would put the coaches getting home past midnight after the last kid is picked up. And so moving to high schools first and the proposal gives an opportunity for us to get high school going sooner for the athletics and after-school activities, band rehearsal, athletic, athletic practice and not have the kids get home so late. And, and in a way to save daylight because it'll get dark, especially in, in, as we get closer to the, to the, to the fall.
Can I piggyback a little bit on that, since you talked about the switching and swapping high school with elementary? The impact on elementary students having a longer day in the afternoon? Who can speak on how those kids react today if they are in the classroom that long, especially late in the day?
So not to speak about a previous experience in another life, but in a, in a former life, I worked somewhere else that actually that was the schedule and there was no effect, but they've had done that for a while. The, the good thing is that you didn't have elementary kids so early on the bus stop, early in the morning in the winter. But the, the reality is that somebody has to be first in the bus pickup and somebody has to be last. And, but there was no noticeable change that I've seen from my previous experience to the current experience where elementary now starts first.
I was just worried about their attention span late in the afternoon.
Right, and, and we've actually, I mean Cabinet has considered this. We would really, and, and we've talked to teaching and learning, we, we have to structure our day differently with more brain breaks for our students. And then in, in building activities that will engage them, especially in the afternoon. And so many of you know that we, we've added, we're trying to add more electives to ensure that you're not only receiving core academic instruction all throughout the day or in the afternoon, but get opportunities to, you know, get more brain breaks, go outside and induce more hand coordination activities of that nature to ensure that you stay engaged. We're not, we're not really gonna deny that going into the transition will be a shift to our kids. It is a transition, it's gonna be difficult for our kids to do that if we go here. But we do know that they will get used to it, as we looked at the research, if that becomes our new norm. And something that I also wanted to say that hasn't been said, if we go to a four instructional day, it is a pilot and it's a pilot, we will track the data because we believe in making data informed decisions in our district. And if it doesn't, if it's not working to the benefit of our students, we will go back if we ever go to four days. So hopefully I answered your question, sir.
You did, the second part of that is how to do with staff that works in our district, works elementary. Maybe they have kids in daycare or students in another district, the timing.
Right, and we actually, one of the questions we designed, I mean, it, it's, of course it serves best if you work in Mesquite, your kid attends with you, our policy permits that. So gives an opportunity for our staff to bring their kids with them. So when they're, they're not working on Friday, they're with their children. But even if they, on the days that they have to work, we, in the proposal, we have six hours of remote and one day of P L, their child will qualify for the enrichment program so they can bring him to the district for the time they have P L and they will be able to be at the elementary school.
Question.
One of the things I was gonna ask you to do, and you kind of started that there, I actually have two questions, but tell me what that Friday's gonna look like for our teachers. I know they have, it's not gonna be, not gonna be off on every Friday, tell me what that looks like.
All right, so before I answer that question, I'm gonna talk about, we, we have done a, a teacher morale study. And the first thing that they wanted was time.
Right.
They wanted time, but not that, not time for themselves because our teachers are dedicated professionals. They want times to create effective lessons to address the needs of our kids. That was number one. And so go directly and answer your question now. So if, let's just say in a four, four Friday traditional month, I know some, some months have Friday Fridays, but on four, just for the example, on the first Friday, they will be off. On the second Friday, they will have professional learning, up to six hours. It could be either campus or district, it depends on the, on the needs of that organization. On the third one, they'll be off. And on the fourth one, they'll have virtual, I mean, remote planning hours. And those hours are not to be interrupted by a principal. Those, they can do those from wherever they're at, they are professionals. We need to treat them as professionals, says so, they're expected to show up Monday with lesson plans that they created. And whether they work five hours in the morning or five hours in the afternoon or five hours at night, it, it's to best suit their schedule. So we're giving them time back so they can create those engaging lessons to address the instructional needs of our kids.
Great, I, I just wanted to hear you say that because I was talking to a couple of teachers today. And our goal in this, if we move forward with this, is to give our teachers more time so that they don't have to work late at night or on Saturdays or on Sundays, that they'll have more opportunity during the five days to get their work done. And that's, that's really our motivation in all this. Second question, and I know Stacy's not here tonight, so we may need this one later. I've had a couple of concerns from special ed department. They're swamped most of the time with paperwork and deadlines and things like that. I'd like to hear from, maybe from Stacy at another time or something like that, what their thoughts are on how they will manage their requirements for their ARDs and their paperwork that goes with all that. We may not have to do that tonight, but maybe Stacy could later.
Yes, Mr. Bingham, and just to, I, I agree with you to talk to Dr. Carpenter about this. One of the things we've have actually calculated is, we know it's gonna take additional special education staff because although the instructional week is four days, the special ed timelines pause for no one. So we know in our account, and we're accounting for the increase. But if you go and look at the current specialist staffing, you will know that we are, we have a lot of vacancies in special education right now. So we hope that this strategy would alleviate and would attract specialist staff to Mesquite I Z to alleviate that burden.
Good, thank you.
I, I was gonna say, and, and I'm glad you also mentioned the fact that, you know, like any new process, it takes time to tweak it and get it right and we have to get used to it. I understand that. However, the numbers were pretty favorable in this survey that, that you ran. Maybe continue the discussion, we're gonna have to have some more meetings, maybe run another survey again to see if, if there's any change. Because I think that the, the more we inform our teachers and parents, the better the stages they're gonna make too. I mean, it goes both ways, so that's just my idea. And then I was glad to hear somebody refer to Ricky Bobby because that was, that was a good quote there.
So Taylor, there's, I heard the question about safety and security and discipline. Do you have any insight, do you think there will be an impact to you on, I realize I just called you out. My bad.
Nobody's safe.
I mean, I would separate the two things, safety and security and discipline. Safety and security, whether we're open for 15 hours a day or for four hours a day, we have the same protocols and things of that nature. But what I'll say is a, as a high school principal, especially, you know, the majority of the, the discipline that we would deal with happen between periods, it didn't typically happen during class time. Far fewer referrals come from teachers, they usually come from times spent not in class. So, you know, thinking about that, that's been a discussion item for us is, is do you stay block scheduled? Do you do seven period days, eight period days, things of that nature? And when you go to more period days, there's more transition times going to classes. And so, you know, there's, we've had conversations about, do we tweak? Do we shorten the transition times to where kids are now, we're hurrying to class versus having time to, to, to stop and, and enjoy the time with my friends or to get in trouble per se. I also think that if we went to a seven or eight period day, staying engaged in a classroom is much easier. One of the most challenging things I ever had as a teacher was first year teacher coming in and teaching for an hour and a half. And, you know, instruction is not set up to do that. And it's, you know, we talk about chunking, we, we do transitions, so we're doing direct teach and then we're doing some collaborative work and then we're, you know, we're doing some assessment and getting feedback. And so it's a lot, you're doing that in one period versus whenever you've got a shorter period, a 45 minute or a 50 minute period, 55 minute period, whatever it might add up to. That, those transition pieces don't have to happen as often. And so the engaging activities and having kids engaged to where they're not going off in space, you know, because we've been doing the same thing for an hour and a half. So I think that could essentially improve some of the discipline that teachers have to deal with on, on a daily basis.
Thank you.
Well, quick question. I know this is affecting mainly the schools, administration on the schools and the students. But what about admin, are, is admin gonna be open five days a week?
We have discussed several options for admin because we will be, some of us will be, and I left it up to the division leaders, for example, you know, maintenance and operations. I know Taylor's department, they're gonna be running transportation. So there'll be, there'll be people on duty, there'll be people off duty. And I left it up to the, to the, each of the leaders to make a determination what they need because if they directly support campuses and campuses is not gonna be there, I want them working when the campuses are working and, and be fair about, about that. So I, I couldn't answer your question like specifically a general blanket because it depends. I, I don't need to have the, the help desk working on Friday that there's no one to be, no one to help. So it, it depends on the duties they perform in the district, the hours which, in which they work or will they not work on Friday or work on Friday.
Well, I would just say it could be an added service that we present to parents that have to come and speak to anybody in administration because the day could be dedicated to them. It's just a comment.
I reached out to several folks that I know in the district from two-year employees to 22-year employees. And the one question that I asked them was, finish this sentence, what I need most is, across the board, 100% except for one said time. And the one that didn't say time said less paperwork, but she followed it up with, if I had more time, paperwork wouldn't be an issue. One of those folks was part of our ready, set, teach program. And she took this four day concept to her students who are in the ready, set, teach program. So they've got skin in the game, they're planning on coming back to work here. And she called me and said, is there any way you can come by here? And I went by there and they had spent the morning doing research on this concept on their own. And I can tell you, the public, that what they told me mirrors what you've heard tonight. That even the students were saying, we need time, we don't have time in our schedule. Time to catch up on projects, time to catch up. Some of them said, because of my AP schedule, now I can participate in more fine arts and athletics because it's, it's, it's the way that their schedule's set up, they can play volleyball on Friday nights and not have to worry about missing as much time. But they said if we miss some of our dual credit and AP classes. They said if we miss some of our dual-credit and A P classes, the makeup is just, it's crazy having to get it done, if they're not having to make that up because they're missing on Fridays. But our kids love each other, and one of the things, and we addressed this somewhat in the, in the survey, that, the, one of the, after the time, they said was, our friends that need meals. And these kids were concerned about their classmates that they know that need that help, and I know that we're gonna work on that, and we've got a plan working for that. But their, their, their comments were, were basically that, is even the kids needed more time. And even, they had questions, and they had brought it up, and here's the pros, and here's the cons. And as students, they were for it, as long as we had those questions answered. So, and all of them said, basically, the teachers were, if the four-day week, five-day week, we love a four-day week, but if you can't give me more time, doesn't do me any good. And the other question that, that I've heard, that I haven't heard tonight is, and I can hear some of the folks online and audience going, what is, when you referred to, and feel free to drag anybody up you would like, you made a reference to a modified block schedule. We've heard that the block schedule benefits what we're doing already, we've heard there's some benefits to losing that and going to an eight-period day. What, what is there, I know there's probably not a definite answer for that, but it was referenced in the slide that the public has, as far as a modified block schedule. What exactly would, give more information on that. Feel free to drag anybody up.
I am gonna drag someone up, because I am not an instructional person. I am a communications person, so.
Y'all, get comfortable, we might need you again, but go ahead.
And I'm gonna say, I know Dr. Ta, Dr. Hammond and her team have worked extensive hours on these questions, so she can tell you everything they discussed.
And I'm glad you said that, because we know that there has been lots and lots of been, not all burned on this project, and there may be some more in the next three weeks, and may have some more answers in three weeks, but I know that there's folks asking that question right now, so.
So there's a whole lot to making the schedule work. You have to meet the required minutes by the state. The C T E, meeting C T E minutes has been the hardest thing for us. The state's raising those from 8,000 next year to 8,100. So we had to make sure whatever we put together met those minutes. That was a huge challenge. I think this week, someone sent me version R of a possible calendar. But the one we've been looking at the most, as Laura, as Ms. Jobe showed on the slide, has 493 minutes in the day. It is a modified block, meaning first, second, third, fourth, sixth, and seventh are all 54 minutes long. But fifth period would be a block, so there, the students would have a 5A and a 5B, that's to get lunches in. It also gives them a little extra time for some transitions, if they wanna move kids specifically throughout the building certain way, some of our schools at lunch are really crowded in their cafeterias. It also would allow some travel for C T E pathways. One of the things that we've talked about with this, though, is most important to remember, whatever we put in that modified block, it does make your master's schedule a little more hard to create. Let's look at things that we want to be double-blocked. Athletics, fine arts, certain electives, C T E classes are sometimes double-blocked. What are other things that kids might wanna take during that time? Let's look at our, our foreign language credits, our BIM credits. What we talked about not wanting to do was put maybe English 1 or Algebra 1 in that time period, because they wouldn't see their teacher every day. And that is something that's very important to us. So, we've talked through all the options. That's what the modified block we've looked at the most. There have been several versions, but that's the one we've looked at the most, where just a fifth period.
And the registrars are involved.
The registrars were a huge part, I actually pulled high school principals' registrars and lead counselors last week, and ran them through several calendars. They wanted to try their hand at creating their own, so we spent about an hour and a half doing that. There's would have put us at school way too long, so the modified block is the option at this moment.
You saw that for the high school, for the little kids, the elementary? Did you see that similar complication, or does it seem like it's?
So I took one of our larger elementary schools and created kind of a, a modified schedule of what Dr. Rivera would like to see, which is more break time for our teachers, as he's referenced. We've added in some electives at the lower levels, fine arts mostly, all, all, in fact, all fine arts-based, and added a few minutes to P E each day, to get some bigger breaks for students, but also bigger breaks for teachers, so that that time is there. So I've created him a, a, a modified example of that. It's, it's tricky, but it's doable, so.
Okay.
The last thing that I will say about that, because I'm, I'll hear the cheers online when I say this, I hope, is, and I've mentioned this to Dr. Rivera and everybody, is, if we tell a teacher, and this comes from a husband of a teacher, and some of y'all know this, if we tell a teacher that you're gonna have time in your classroom on this day for you to get caught up, please don't dare mess with that.
Yeah.
Don't pull them into a two-hour meeting at the last minute. If they're gonna have time, please honor that. Please honor the teacher's time so they'll have.
I was a new teacher who came from alternative cert when I taught. I would've paid good money for some time. I, I remember, I, I was teaching at West, I was teaching history and Spanish through alternative cert. Paid good money to have some extra time, just to, one, to learn what I was doing, start there, and then to have somebody be able to work with me. That, and there just was no schedule space for that.
It's the most precious commodity.
Do y'all say any questions?
Thank you, sorry.
Mr. Stringer and, and Coach, would, would going to this four-day instructional week help us or hinder us from drawing more students into extracurricular activities? Or, is that a fair question?
No, that's not fair.
I know it's an opinion.
Well, you know, just some comments that y'all need to have as you make decisions. I, I do think, going back real quick to the high school being first, if high schools last, the days extended, that you would have to pull kids out of class every Tuesday so that they can get on a bus and go, they would miss a lot of class time. That's why that earlier time, regardless what time that is. Right now, we get out at 3:55, 4 o'clock, and that's, that's pretty much that, that fine line of trying to get through traffic to get to a game in Royce City. So that's one thing. I will say, the challenge that I've had to wrap my mind around is more middle-school athletics, rather than high school. I believe high school, like, for me, athletics, I don't think we'll miss a beat. I think it will be solid. As far as saying recruiting more kids, I think we'll recruit great coaches, great teachers. I, I think, I mean, I've got two kids in high school, and I haven't really spent a whole lot of time asking them, but I feel like they would love something like this. And, and there are challenges and some unknowns, but with middle school not having school on Friday, that's really, that truly is one less day with those kids, and we gotta think outside the box what that might look like, you know, having some practices with middle school kids on Fridays, which, you know, right now, we never really bring them up on any time when we don't have school, that we just don't. Right now, we have a pretty good setup, but they, they don't have games on Friday, and we currently use Fridays for practice time. So, we gotta think outside the box a little bit. And, and the good thing, coaches are gonna, you know, we have professional development days, they have, that's why coaches get stipends, you know, that, and I believe they've done it their whole life, these, these youth sports, they play their games on Saturdays, they, and we just have benefited from playing our competitions on Tuesday and Wednesday. I've been at other school districts that all of our competitions have been on Saturdays with middle-school athletics. So we just have to think through some things, but that's definitely something that I've had to figure out. Middle, middle school will look a little bit different, but zero concerns on high school for me, as far as that.
What's your biggest downside and your biggest upside, real quick? I'm gonna ask you the same question, so.
Biggest downside is, is the extended day, the Tuesdays, you're dealing with bus routes. You know, really, it's talking about transportation for us. It's the challenge of needing more coaches to potentially drive. So there, there is some downside to an extended day and kinda spreading it out. Upside, again, I think overall morale for coaches. I think when you're out of season, truly, th- those Fridays are kinda, can be refreshing for them. There's still opportunities, maybe to have open gyms and open weight rooms, and giving kids opportunities to be able to utilize facilities, but I think overall, if you're fully staffed, what's happening with our coaches right now, is that single conference that they do have, a lot of time, they have lunch duty associated with that, and then on top of that, they're getting pulled to go cover classes, and they really don't have a break. And they're already practicing before school and after school, and they are maxed out. And I believe being fully staffed, which is what this, I think, that's the goal, I really think that's a super positive for our coaches. When they're already committed to work the time, they're already committed to work the Fridays. If you talk to a lot of our staffs, they're working most Saturdays, and so we're, we're not afraid of the time commitment working, but you want them to have that time to prep and be the best teacher they can, because they're pulled in a lot of different directions, but.
So, to address the recruiting and retention portion, I, I echo what Coach Crowe said, middle school's gonna be our biggest challenge. When you're learning an instrument, especially a beginning band and orchestra, that daily practice of that instrument and reinforcement of how to hold the instrument, how to sit correctly, how to breathe correctly, how to bow correctly, that's really an important aspect. So we will have to get creative on Fridays, just like Coach said, about what are we gonna do so we can ensure that we don't lose ground with our kids? Because if they don't sound good, then they get frustrated and they don't continue in the program. And that's, that's really important, and that's true for beginning actors, beginning singers, not just instrumentalists. So, I, that, I think that's, that's our biggest challenge as far as recruiting and retention goes, to make sure that we're providing our students the same level of education that they currently get, in middle school especially. I, I kinda echo his sentiments with high school. I think we, we can get really creative with some high school things, and our, our kids are more mobile, they can get to school easier on Friday and that kind of thing. So I think we can, we can be creative there, and it would be a little bit easier than the middle school level with that. As far as our biggest challenge with this, I think it's, it's how we structure extra rehearsals, because unlike coaches, some of our folks don't do a significant portion of their rehearsal outside of school, and I'll use our orchestra program, for example, on that. They don't use, they don't, most of their work, because they don't pull anyone together, like, it's not like a marching band where they pull the whole ensemble together, they do most of that work during the day. But in order for them to have the consistent, once again, consistency of rehearsal, they're gonna have to, we're gonna have to figure out how to do that, and we're gonna have to figure out how to, if we're taking some time away, what, what we're gonna do to honor them as well. So I think, I think that's our biggest challenge. Once again, all these are challenges, they're not, they're not overcomable, they're not, we, we can overcome anything, right? And the biggest high, and I'll, I'll be, I'll be, once again, really transparent, I just came back from the Texas Music Educators Association Convention this last week in San Antonio, we had our six All-Staters up here earlier tonight, and I served as the president of the organization this year, and I will say that there are people that came up to me and said, hey, we think Mesquite's going, we, we heard Mesquite might be going to a four-day, we saw it on Facebook, saw draft calendar, and some of, some of them did say, well, let me know, you know? And I, I think the recruiting of, of quality folks, we wanna make sure that we recruit, and we also retain, though. I think, I think that's, that's a really important thing. You get the best teachers here, and you want them to stay here for their entire career. Because we said, what, the most important thing is the person standing on the box, which is our podium for us. Person standing on the box is the most important thing to those kids. So if we can get the best people here, that's the, that's the high for us.
I think that's an important comment that I forgot about, so I think you reminded me, is that this doesn't solve the teacher shortage. And at some point, if we went to this, and like the gentleman said earlier, if, if everybody else goes to it, now we're all back on the same playing field. So how are we gonna, we're gonna have a challenge still in a few years of retaining those folks that we would gain from something like this, we're still gonna have to retain those, because then if everybody follows suit, we're back in the same mix as everybody else. So, we just gotta make sure that we have the quality goods to keep them here, which we do. I think we're doing a great job with that, we have to make sure we maintain it.
I just wanted to add to it. Everything's been said that's good. We got good survey information. I know that you're working hard to address all the concerns you've heard. And earlier, you, you answered one of my questions with the pilot. This will not be a permanent thing, this is something we'll look at, we gotta look at the data. Because you and I've talked about, one of the expectations or concerns I have is the learning loss. We, the expectation would be that our students are gonna grow in their knowledge and their learning. And that, to me, we have two priorities, staff retention and the growth of our students. And everybody's gonna have to be held accountable that we meet those expectations, because if we're not growing those students, then we need to rethink what we're doing. And I love to make sure that we take care of our teachers, but our students have got to learn and grow.
Are there currently any districts that have implemented this several years ago that have, may have student achievement data?
Yes, so.
In their specific district?
Yes, Athens I S D, they're not our size, but when they implement it, they have significant increases in student achievement. But I would say, because we're about to have a, a new star, right, a refresh of the accountability system, so we wouldn't be comparing apples to apples that particular time, I just feel like I have to say that. But the district that has done it for at least three years, they have seen an increase in student achievement, being Athens I S D.
Teacher retention?
Yeah, their teacher, they actually got, got to, get some teachers, they, they could not, and I spoke to the superintendent, she, they could not keep up with the, the salaries of Tyler I S D, but when they went to a four-day, they were able to take some teachers from Tyler, they were looking for more time, and they reported that the average experience window was between the five and 10 years, which research tells us that's the most effective teacher. Not to disparage any kind of teacher that's got zero to five, but there's a level of support that the district has to be able to contribute to those teachers, to bring them up, and they will be amazing educators when they're supported correctly, but it does take another level of engagement and a level of commitment from the district to support that, if you're able to find a candidate. We still have vacancies this year, and so.
Thank you.
Just a couple more questions regarding school campuses that may be closed on Friday. What happens with the cafeteria staff and the custodial staff at those campuses?
One of the things that we, that we know, is that we calculated that no compensation will be affected by this, negatively affected, because they will get their hours on a Monday through Thursday. And then some of those schools that will be serving the enrichment program, then those will serve as opportunities for overtime for, for those, those workers. Instructional aides and cafeteria workers alike, and bus drivers, because when, when we go a little bit longer in a day, we're able to participate in the supper program. So I also wanted, wanted to say that, you know, a lot of people have emailed me in terms of, oh, you're just trying to save money. This is not, and I repeat, this is not a budget-neutral or a budget-negative, meaning that we're saving money. When you feed students on a Thursday for Friday, you're not compensated for those meals, so we are not saving money by doing this, this is not a driver for us. And we're, and then we're actually providing the enrichment program and operational costs of the buildings on a Friday, not charging for that, and so we're absorbing that. So this is all about putting the best educator in front of our kids, period.
From the standpoint of middle school and high school students that may not live in a safe household, where school, going to school equals to them safety, have we considered those students?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, we have. We, we didn't consider it at the beginning, and so we added it to the consideration about whether it was opening through, providing services through our libraries and have it on a rotating schedule, but to be honest, we have it not, because it came in a later time. We haven't ironed out the details of that operation for the secondary student.
Yeah, Board, you, you all know, and, and those that are in the audience, those that are watching live, or will watch this in the next few days, this would be a monumental shift for this district, there's no question regarding that. And if this does not help us in student achievement, then our goals will not be accomplished. And so that's why we'll have a decision to make in the coming weeks regarding whether or not we implement this decision. But Kevin made a point earlier, Ms. Jobe, I don't know what questions this is going to bring up from community members, parents, staff. Is there some way that they can reach out to communications regarding the questions that this discussion has, and we can get answers to them?
Absolutely. I neglected to mention that we'll be posting the presentation that was given early this evening, as well as the results from the thought exchange that we, that we conducted on our website, and then we will also have a form there where people can submit questions that we can answer.
Regarding, Kevin, I also made a comment regarding another survey, I'm not sure if, if that would be beneficial, or if it's even possible to do, and I'm just kinda floating that balloon up in the air, if you will. kind of floating that balloon up in the air, if you will.
Okay, I think anything is possible. Another survey is possible, should you decide that's what you would like us to do.
Okay, so.
One more question I have is about the next, I know we will have to address this at the next meeting. We'll have to address this in the future. Well, I mean, we have more information on, or will be further down the road, based on some of the questions we heard tonight and things, so some of those, we'll have some of those answers possibly, mother.
I would, yes, I would say yes. The more we discuss this, the more answers we come to. So it's just a process of working through each question as it comes up.
As was stated earlier, we'll have a meeting three weeks from tonight, so there could be a decision on this if the board opts to go ahead and make a change to our instructional calendar. This could occur either at the March 6 meeting or a special meeting that would be called that the public would be aware of prior to that. So anybody have anything else to add? Dr. Rivera? Thank you, Ms. Jobe.
Appreciate it.
I think too, the part where I said, I wish all those people that were here for their various reasons stayed, because this is the kind of thoughtfulness that our school board does. It's not something, I always go to a four-day, I want to pick more teachers. We think about it, we talk about it, Laura's over there doing all this research, your people that are part of heads of departments, they're doing research, these are the kind of things that people need to know. When this decision is made, I love the fact that it's just a pilot, so that means it can go back, you know, we can go back to whenever we need to, but we're going to do the best thing, everything is going to be executed to the max until we make sure when we do this, it's going to be successful because it's you guys, you know, and it's these guys, these teachers that are coming up here and these parents, and that people need to see that. Unfortunately, I know we got a lot of this lady, we're all, all of us are, I'm tired, I can't leave, this is like, right, this is like, I can't leave, this is so irritating. And that people need to know that, when we do stuff, when MISD does something, they do it the best way. And when teachers come here, they're going to find that out. That's why they're not going to leave. The ones that get here, they're going to know, wow, we found, this is awesome, we're part of the family, right, we're in the nest, so, yeah.
Okay, next item on the agenda is an action item, to approve a resolution to pay employees for the days during the district closing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So one of the things that administration is bringing forward, last week, we were forged to close four days, and because of the dedication of a lot of people, in terms of planning for the year, we added five minutes to the day last year, and those actually came back to be bear beneficial. So we don't, we currently don't have to make up the minutes of instruction except for high school, if we're not granted the waiver by the commissioner on those days. But we do have to address the compensation for employees on those four days, because we cannot give public funds. And so we bring to you a resolution today to, as a recommendation by administration, to compensate the staff for the four days missed, and we'll worry about the minutes when and if the commissioner grants us at least a one-day waiver.
We have motion by Ms. Collier, a second by Mr. Bingham, to approve the resolution to pay employees for days during the district closing. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is a discussion item of the district-wide intruder detection audit report findings. Mr. Morris.
One day y'all get a break from me on this, but as you know, every month, we get a call from somebody with the Region 10 that says that they're going to be performing some of the random intruder audits. We have had, I think, four already this month with no findings. Anytime we have findings, there are special things that we do to address those findings. I was looking at the numbers, you know, a lot of the Texas School Safety Center released some data several weeks ago about the amount of findings that they found, you know, and I was thinking about the fact that we require our classroom doors to be locked during instruction, it's just an added level of safety that we have in our district that not every district has. And so I think about what, for anytime we have a finding, sometimes it's those classroom doors, which is something extra that we do that these intruder audits, auditors are not even looking at in other districts. And so we've had 27 audits this year, 27 of our 51 campuses have had these visitors, and I've talked to some other districts, and we've had, I feel like, a lot more than they've had. And so we've done a really good job, and our campuses are continuing to do a great job with all those measures, so.
Main goal is to keep our students and staff safe, so thank you, Mr. Morris. Next item is an action item to declare intent for the new Ben and Joanne Cross Elementary School attendance zone and changes in the Mackey-Thompson-Grey-Oxiger-Henry-Terry and Woolley attendance zones.
So as you know, we're opening a brand-new, beautiful, new elementary next year, Ben and Joanne Cross Elementary at 6425 Hart Vista Drive in Mesquite. The opening of Cross will impact several attendance zones, not just the, with Cross, but also, as Mr. Everett just said, Oxiger-Grey, Henry, Mackey, Terry, and Woolly. The packet that you all received has some maps, it has the old attendance zone, attendance lines, it has the new attendance lines, and it also has what the schools would lose and/or gain, depending on how the zones are drawn. What I'll say is, ever since I've been in Mesquite, the neighborhood school concept is something that I have really thought was a great, a great thing in the southern part of our community, where we still have a lot of land and a lot of development happening. We don't have that. And so as we built these new schools, we're able to provide that neighborhood school concept. Even with this one, we're going to, it will enable some of our areas of our community that are driving, that are having to go several miles to school, bus transportation, things of that nature that we won't have to do anymore because their school is going to be much closer. And so there are, there are some impacts. If these proposed changes are approved, we're going to mail letters to parents this week. Parents will be notified of how this is going to work. We're also going to be able to get input from them, any concerns they have or questions we'll be able to answer. We'll sift through those things before we make a final recommendation next month for y'all to approve the change in the attendance zones. But I'll take any questions that you have now about that.
This is always an unsettling time for families and boards, but this seems to be one of the more simple, I hate to even use that word, because this does restore our neighborhood school.
It does.
It's been really convoluted down there.
Yes, it has.
Hopefully, that will carry the day. So, thank you. Later, too.
Thank y'all.
This is an action item.
No, it's not.
My sheet shows action regarding declare intent. Mr. Thomas, do we need to take action to declare intent? Okay. Next item under construction is a report on facilities update.
Thanks for staying.
I appreciate it. We're going to have a quick update, don't start the three-minute timer, it may take a minute or two longer than that. I appreciate the opportunity to bring tonight what we've been doing in the past year, year plus, on the facility assessment. So we'll go ahead and get started. Today, we're going to review the process of the assessment, we're going to review a few general findings, and then talk about next steps. So we started our assessment by touring 53 campuses, 21 for support facilities, with our architectural, MEP, technology, and food service and roofing consultants, to look for issues that would affect these facilities over the next 10 years. We also have got input from your demographer, school district strategies. We got input from Taylor and True North Safety and Security Assessment, that is actually included in the assessments, and then all of the MISD departmental groups to get input on this assessment. We've allotted a priority to each of the campuses that we'll talk about here in just a minute, priority one through four, and that basically determines how immediate the need is. Again, we started looking at the demographer information, checking TEA capacity and what those findings provide within the next 10 years. Again, that's based on previous attendance zones, so we'll have to take another look. Some of this information will be cyclical as you guys make other decisions and board meetings. We also looked at national averages. In 2016, the average public school building was 44 years old. Mesquite is well below that average, and you have an average facility of 29 years old, so I'd say you're doing very well. Keeping with the theme of positive news, these images, kind of hard to see on the screen, but basically, each of those land plots on the left side represents a facility that you've made an improvement to in the last 10 years, either by an addition, renovation, or significant change. The schools on the right are new facilities or replacement facilities. So that's how the previous 10 years' worth of bond dollars have been spent as a benefit to the school district. We started the process of our evaluation by walking facilities with MISD tech services and architectural team. We had the MEP group out there, and we used that information to put together a report in five different categories based on the component and assembly. So a poor to excellent rating was provided, meaning poor could result in immediate change, immediate fix, or within two years, or excellent was 15 years or longer. These reports were provided in the report, and I know you guys have seen kind of the draft of those reviews, we're in the prioritization phase right now. It's a lengthy report, there's actually three binders, over 1,000 pages, that basically document all of the facility findings that we found. We also provided within that report, per campus, cost estimates that provide categories, ITO breakdown, and then what the actual cost adds up to. This is just a snapshot of what you can find, I'm sorry for, if it's too small on the screen to see it, but it just kind of provides an example. This shows general upgrades, maintenance and mechanical changes that would need to be updated. Other prioritization, which is the phase we're in right now, how we're going to move forward with this, it's a collaboration effort between the school district, WRA, and all the departments that we've talked to so far, basically, we're going to take into consideration age of facility and time since last improvement, weight, the facility walk evaluation needs, if it was several weighted, very quick issues that we need to resolve, or if it had time to be in kind of the 15-year replacement category. The enrollment capacity versus the expected growth, basically taking the demographer information. Safety and security needs, those that have been identified by MISD, and then the ones that are definitely required by TEA, and Taylor and facilities are actually taking care of several of those. So even though they're within the report, the cost has already been addressed prior to the report being finalized. And then instructional adequacy. Other findings that you'll have in the final version of the facility assessment is the summary list. This is an easy-to-diagnose, I know it's kind of small on this page, and that's just to show what it'll look like when the report's finalized, but basically, a dashboard view of every campus, the age of the facility, the enrollment, current capacity, the priority, and then expected priority one through four costs. And we even have a line item on here to compare replacement school cost, not that we're suggesting a replacement school, but if you wanted to compare, how much investment are we making at this campus? And then also the notes that go along with that. General findings, these two, these two images represent facilities that the demographer showed as going beyond practical capacity in the next 10 years. Again, that may be updated when the attendance zone are redrawn, so we'll take another look at that and provide an update. And then other general findings include safety standards that have been updated by TEA. You guys are very familiar with this, Taylor's up here on a regular basis, kind of providing information that are basic requirements that are going to be required, existing in new facilities. This is the list of facilities that currently do not have tornado shelters. It shows several of those facilities, we only provide that within the report to note that they do not have a storm shelter, and if we do add on to or provide a new facility that a storm shelter would be required at that point. And then aging facility needs, you'll find throughout the report, general facility assessment needs that talk about replacing finishes and surfaces due to normal wear and tear, age of the, age of the facility, and what we expect from students and teachers using a building. Also ADA compliance updates, any restrooms, door hardware, or playground surfacing that has not been addressed in the meantime, just an update to ADA standards. And same thing, the city on several of these facilities will have adopted two or three codes past what the building was designed to, so there will be certain things that we'll probably have to address if we do move into that facility with a renovation or addition. Other items that you find in our general findings are typical roof replacement cycles, obsolete electrical components, rooftop and mechanical units, these are just typical things that you would find in a facility assessment, so that's, those are the general findings. Next steps, we will be back in May to present the final version of the facility assessment. I think, I didn't make three minutes, but I tried to save your time. Any questions on the facility assessment? Again, we're in the prioritization phase, so it's still kind of in draft form and taking comments at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Graham. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Appreciate it.
The next item is an action item to approve the guaranteed maximum price for Horn High School addition. Welcome, Mr. Poole.
Hello, good evening, Board. Dr. Rivera, President.
No tie?
Scott took it. Yes. Great. Here tonight, WA Architects, POG Construction, and MISD Construction Services recommend the approval of the Horn High School ninth-grade addition, GMP 2, the guaranteed maximum price in the total amount of $34,617,600, as submitted by POG Construction, the construction manager at risk. This amount combined with the previously proved GMP 1 of $6,646,274 brings the total combined GMPs to $41,263,874, with a total construction cost of both GMPs, $47,505,798.99. And we recommend to the Board of Trustees, Board of Trustees, that the GMP to cover the cost and the total construction cost. And with us tonight, from, we got Jay Russell here from MISD, from WRA, I got Graham Bowman and Roland Gentry, and from POG, I have Tommy Freely, Jack Green, Justin McMath, and Jeff Collinsworth. Any questions?
Yeah, they're good.
Do what? Yeah. We save cans.
I do have a question. I do have a question.
Yes.
Are they going to work five days or four days?
I think we're going on the five, or six. It depends on Tommy, so.
I do have a question about, just so I make sure the numbers are clear. The GMP 2 is a $34 million.
Yes.
The first one was the $6.6 million for the total of 41. Then the total project cost, where does the other $6 million coming from?
The total project cost is basically the architects, the engineers, the consultants, landscaping, you know, basically all the overhead that goes into that. So when you approve the GMP, it's just.
Put that out there so folks know.
Yeah.
Do you have a second already?
We have a motion by Mrs. Whitlock, and a second by Mr. Carbo, to approve the guaranteed maximum price for Horn High School as presented. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion?
So, when do you think it'll be done?
The school. I think we're doing August of '24.
Okay.
Would be the opening date for that.
Any other questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye? Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is an action item to approve the construction method for the welding lab at Mesquite High School.
So we're doing the renovations over at the Mesquite High Welding Lab, and we'd like to do the method as construction manager agent, which is basically, we contract, the district contracts directly with the subcontractors, and the GC is basically, you know, the GC of our eyes.
We have a motion by Mr. Rose and a second by Mr. Bingham to approve the construction method for the welding lab at Mesquite High School for the construction manager agent. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye? Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is an action item to approve the general contract for the welding lab for Mesquite High School.
Yeah. As the, we just did the CMA for the agent is on the welding lab, we'd like to name the contractor to be Lee Lewis Construction. And then here with us tonight from Lee Lewis is Ty Parsons with Lee Lewis. With the recommend, we recommend the approval of, to Lee Lewis Construction to be the CMA agent on the welding lab renovation.
A motion by Mr. Bingham and a second by Mr. Rose to approve Lee Lewis Construction as the GC for the welding lab for Mesquite High School. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye? Those opposed, no. Motion carries. That was our last item on the agenda. Does, you have anything to add, Dr. Rivera?
Just one thing, Mr. President, I want to recognize two colleagues. Mr. Paul Jones and Matt Kimball, would you please stand? They're colleagues in the Bob Thompson Executive Leadership Program, and so if you know what it takes to keep you sane, well, colleagues like that keep you sane all the time. We go around and, and part of, part of our, part of our charge is to go to other school districts, attend board meetings, and learn from each other. It's a little bit of a cross pollination, so I thank these two gentlemen for hanging in with us for a very interesting and long board meeting. Thank you, gentlemen.
Board, do you have anything to add? With, with no other items? Thank you. With no other items on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.